So at this time, we'll call the City Council meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Lamore.
Excused.
Whitman. Stillgrave. Vining.
Here.
Germaine.
Here.
Unless we all please rise to the invocation, remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hope in each other and our city. We ask for your guidance in the decisions that are made here this evening. We ask you to work for the welfare of the community and all of its residents.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, next item.
The next item is the approval of the regular agenda.
Regular agenda, Mr. Pastu, any amendments, adjustments?
No changes, Your Honor.
Okay, looking at council, I see none. Next item, please. Oh, I guess we better approve the agenda first.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the regular agenda.
There's a motion by Councilwoman Felder, supported by Councilwoman Vining, to approve the regular agenda. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Stillgrave.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Germaine.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Now, next item.
Next item is the consent agenda, and for item B, approval of payments, the amount
Are there any items on the consent agenda that council wishes to have pulled for further discussion? Any items on the consent agenda? None? Are there any items on the consent agenda, those present here this evening, wish to have pulled for further discussion? Those are items that are under consent agenda. We have items under council action, and under council action, we'll hear those items individually because they require individual discussion and vote by the council. So, again, any items on the consent agenda, those present here this evening, wish to have pulled for further discussion? Seeing none, a motion be in order?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Felder.
I'd like to make a motion that all items on the consent agenda be accepted, placed on file, recommendations carried out, and resolutions adopted.
Support.
Motion by Councilwoman Felder, supported by Councilwoman Stillgrave, that all items on the consent agenda be accepted, placed on file, recommendations carried out, and resolutions adopted. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Stillgrave.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Germaine.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Next item, please.
The next item on the agenda is under Presentations, Communications, and Public Hearings, item 3803, Employee Introductions.
Mr. Pastu.
Your Honor, I'd like to have Dr. Julie Everly, Director of Human Resources, do the introduction for this next item.
Honorable mayor and council, thank you for having us tonight. We're very excited and grateful for the opportunity to, that you allow, an item on your agenda to celebrate our employees. So, we know that when you establish your council goals and objectives, in order for our citizens to recognize those, a very important connector between those goals and objectives and them being enacted is the staff to do it. So, this evening, we're very proud to honor and celebrate some of our leadership in the Public Safety Department. And with that, I'd like to introduce Director Chad Tolstead to celebrate our new Public Safety commanders.
Thank you.
Honorable mayor, City Council members, Clerk Lavoy, City Attorney Vince Pastu, Matt Budz. Before we get started, I'd like to recognize a couple people that did show up tonight, two past fire chiefs are here, Chief Manuel Hoskins and Chief Rob White. I want to thank you both for coming out tonight, very much appreciated. It was approximately one year ago that we began to restructure the Monroe Public Safety Department. With the vision set forth by council, the department has remained firm on that vision, but flexible in how we arrived there. Change is always difficult. It brings up almost in every one of us, either we will lose something we value or fail to get something we want. The journey, that journey is one we are on as a Public Safety Department program. But I am confident that once we get there where we're going, the pains of the labor will be long forgotten. During these times, as we adjust and grow in new areas, leadership is most important. Leadership is not encumbered by challenging days, deterred by setbacks or conflicts, but rather is dependable, steadfast, constant, and unwavering. Last month, you approved three commanders for the department, which sets forth that kind of leadership for the department. I have greatly appreciated the support that the council members have during this process and showed us. These commanders have the right combinations of institutional knowledge, managerial skills, character to move this department forward. I'm appreciative of the opportunity to have each of the commanders stand before you tonight. My introductions will be brief, as each new commander has been given the opportunity to reflect on their time with the city and what their role is with the department. My first introduction will be Commander J.D. Wall. Commander Wall will serve as Administrator Commander for the department. His executive-level skills, experience as a public information officer will be implemented across both divisions. It has been a pleasure to work with Commander Wall for his entire career. Commander Wall has built positive relationships with many departments, organizations throughout the city, which will not only benefit the department, but will also benefit the city as a whole. I will now introduce Commander Wall.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to thank Mayor Clark, City Council members, Clerk Treasurer Lavoy, City Manager Pastu, for taking the time to recognize each of us individually and as a whole as we move Monroe Public Safety in a forward, positive direction. I would like to thank Director Tolstead for his vision, leadership, and trust in each of our unique skills and abilities to work together, putting our citizens first, and providing excellent service to our community. Most importantly, I would like to thank my beautiful wife Kendra and two sons Dawson and Garrett. I would also like to thank my mom and dad, who are here in the audience tonight. I am truly blessed to have a family that has supported me through every step of my career. They too have made sacrifices, for that I am grateful. I began working for the city Monroe in November of 2000, the Monday following Thanksgiving. I can distinctly remember how excited and thankful I was to be afforded that opportunity. Here I stand before you today on the threshold of Thanksgiving, flooded with those same feelings I keenly remember in 2000, honored for the opportunity to serve in the capacity of a commander. I understand the great responsibility of being a commander, and I do not take my duties lightly. While serving on the Monroe Police Department, I've worked in the areas of road patrol, the Detective Bureau, and administration. I was promoted in May of 2015 as the administrative sergeant, then through the rank of commander as I stand before you today. October of 2017, I was a graduate of the 33rd class of Eastern Michigan University School of Police Staff and Command Executive Leadership Program. I also worked as an associate instructor for the Wayne County Regional Police Academy at Schoolcraft College. My current responsibilities include training, statistics, purchasing, policy management, fleet maintenance, grant management, evidence control, property maintenance, and media relations as the public information officer, hiring and recruiting, and compliance control. I am also responsible for working directly with narcotics forfeitures, FOIA requests, lean auditing, scheduling, and operating systems. My duties include being the division commander for the Public Safety Records Bureau, professional standards, and community officer. With my recent promotion, my administrative duties branch out into the fire service and coordinate administrative functions with fire staff, which also includes the recruitment and onboarding process for new firefighters. I've supervised road patrol officers, provided oversight for the Detective Bureau, and currently provide oversight to all civilian personnel working for the Public Safety Department. I enjoy working directly with our community partners and working against mediocrity and the status quo. I strive to find more efficient and effective ways to achieve our objectives and goals, keeping the Monroe Public Safety Department at the high level of service we provide, which has become customary in Monroe. In conclusion, I thank my Lord Jesus Christ for the strength and courage to persevere, as I continually pray for wisdom, guidance, and the continued ability to be an effective leader in our department. I look forward to sustaining the positive relationships I have built as we continue to bridge gaps and work together as one team. Thank you.
Commander Wall, before you sit down, I know you recognized your family, but maybe you would help us by recognizing them here in the audience this evening.
Sure, and in the front row with me is my youngest son Garrett, and my dad John, and my mother Rosemary, my oldest son Dawson, and my wife Kendra.
Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Tolstead.
Congratulations again, Commander Wall. Next, I'd like to introduce Commander Scott Smiley. Commander Smiley has served with the fire, has served, will serve as a fire commander and handle the day-to-day operations within the fire service. Commander Smiley has served in all ranks of the fire department, which is impressive. He comes to us well-prepared to assume this role. Commander Smiley brings a respect of his peers within the fire service and within law enforcement as well. I'd now like to introduce Commander Smiley.
Thank you, Director. Honorable mayor, mayor and council, Clerk Lavoy, City Manager Pastu, I would like to thank you for this opportunity to be the fire commander. I am honored and very humbled to be here. Like the director said, I've had 20 years' service with the fire department, and in that time, I have, coming up through the ranks, I've held every position on the fire department, given me a good understanding of how the department runs and operates. I look forward to the future in working with Director Tolstead, Commander Lindsay, and Commander Wall to move the Public Safety Division forward and continue to give the citizens of Monroe the best service possible through training, communication, and outstanding customer service. They say behind every successful man, there stands a strong woman, and in that, I'd like to thank my beautiful wife Jody, my wife and kids, Michaela and Caleb. My new son-in-law Alec is also here. With them, I have had nothing but support and encouragement. They are what inspires me to work hard and gives me my drive. My parents Chuck and Jan Smiley are also here, who have always been behind me and have set the example for hard work, integrity, and family first. I would also like to thank a couple familiar faces, Chief Hoskins and Chief White. They have been mentors to me and have greatly influenced me throughout my career. As a fire commander, I will work hard, and as always, I will give you my best. Thank you.
Commander Smiley, before you depart, I know that you'd be recognition to your family that is here. If you would please give them recognition within the audience, I'd appreciate that.
Sure, my wife Jody, my son Caleb's in the back, my daughter Michaela, my new son-in-law Alec, they just got married last month.
Congrats.
My father Chuck, and my mom Jan.
Thank you all for being here. It's a great day.
Got to get used to this stuff.
Congratulations again, Commander Smiley. Last, I'd like to introduce Commander Derek Wall. I'm sorry.
No.
Derek Lindsay. Derek Lindsay, there it is. Commander Lindsay will serve as a police commander for the police division. Commander Lindsay will oversee the day-to-day operations for the police service. Commander Lindsay comes out of both the patrol and the investigations within the police service, and has a remarkable record in both. His drive and organizational skills is why he was, one of the reasons why he was chosen for this position. Commander Lindsay also brings the respect of all those in law enforcement and those in the fire service as well. I now introduce to you Commander Lindsay.
Honorable mayor, City Council, Clerk Lavoy, City Manager Pastu, I'm going to keep mine short and sweet. First off, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to stand before you as a commander with the newly established Public Safety Department. Obviously, my job will be overseeing all police operations. I've pretty much done everything in the police department up to this point in my career. I've been a member of the police department for just under 23 years, and I've held numerous leadership positions while in that time. I also actually attended the Fire Academy with the first group of police members who became public safety officers back in 2011. Along with Director Tolstead, Commander Wall, and Commander Smiley, I believe the Department of Public Safety now has a solid leadership. It needs to prosper and grow into a much more functional and consolidated Public Safety Department. I've already seen great progress over this last year between the two departments. Once again, I just want to thank you for the confidence and trust that you've given us commanders to lead the Public Safety Department, and I truly look forward to the challenges that lie ahead as we continue to build this department. Once again, thank you for this opportunity.
Honorable mayor, City Council, Clerk Lavoy, City Manager Vince Pastu, thank you again for allowing me the opportunity to introduce the commanders tonight. As always, it's an honor.
Thank you, Director Tolstead, thank you. I'll see if there's any comments from council. I just want to first thank and welcome Fire Chief Hoskins and Fire Chief White for being here and support. I see there's a couple firefighters here as well. I think it speaks well. And look at, when I listen to all three commanders speak to their career, you look at the crossover, the years they, years of service they have, they have been working together collectively over 22 years. And you talk about the experience and information exchange and the growth, they're just as commendable. So I'm going to say, congrats. But I want to thank those for being here this evening and support as well. I don't know if there's any other comments from council members at this time, but it could be later in your council comments as well. Councilwoman Germaine.
I just want to say I'm proud of all of you. I know you're going to be very good at your jobs, and I look forward to the leadership you're going to provide for our city. Thank you.
So, Councilwoman Whitman.
Yes, I would like to say I'm really glad that we have finally reached this point. This has been going on for years, with some people for it, some people against it, and I believe that things worked out the way that they were supposed to. I'm very proud of each and every one of you, and, you know, I have no doubts about the job that you're going to do and what great leadership for our new men and women to have. So, thank you.
Thanks, Councilwoman. I'm just going to follow up with that, because I think as we're here today recognizing kind of the structure that we've now has in place with the Public Safety and our commanders, it didn't happen overnight. And I look, again, the fire chiefs that are in the back and all the work that was done to get here to this day. There was challenges and difficulties at times, but then also there's much growth. And so, I just want to say thanks not only to the commanders and their current roles, but their past duties within their departments, and also thank those that were here before you, because remember, it's those that were here before us of how we're successful today and how the burden is upon all of us as we move forward from this, as you bring along all members of the Public Safety Division, Department, I should say, and the police and fire division, of how we get forward in the future as well. So, I just want to thank you for taking on these important roles. Yes. So, we have one more item under this, I guess, the next is a communication, is that correct?
Yes.
ALCC 2022 Fourth Quarter Report.
Mr. Pastu, before we talk about that, obviously with your families, I think there's probably want to see all of you and greet with you out in the lobby. You're welcome to stay through the rest of the meeting, of course, but also I know you all have important family functions as well as opportunities to share there, and maybe the public as well that might be waiting to see you. Thank you again for being here, and thank the families for both being here as well. Thank you.
I did tell them they could go home afterward.
Okay. Mr. Pastu, on the Opportunity Center at the ALCC 2022 Fourth Quarter Report, I know it's a communication, is there any other comments?
Nope, just filing, you know, their report for council for the record.
Thank you, and it doesn't require a motion, just that we receive receipt of this, this report, and I know that Director Kazrasak was here from MCOP, speaking of the works that were done at our work session. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is under council action. It's item 3786, Consideration of a Resolution to Establish a Downtown Social District.
Thank you, Mr. Pastu.
Your Honor, I'm going to have Mr. Cochran handle the introduction, talk about some of the changes from our last discussion back, I think in September, about establishing a downtown social district. I think he's pulling up the presentation, we get to see the... Remy there?
Remy, hopefully. Okay. Well, we'll fly. Honorable mayor, City Council, Mark Cochran, Economic and Community Development Director, again tonight, following up on a presentation that we had last month regarding the establishment of a social district in the downtown. We went back based on the feedback that was provided by City Council at the last meeting and pretty much just amended the map. So, the safety and health plan and the maintenance plan that was included in tonight's pack, it really wasn't modified a whole lot from the last time we talked. Just by way of recap, the social district allows patrons of downtown bars and restaurants to carry their alcoholic beverages throughout the social district, under certain circumstances that are prescribed by state statute, such as having to be served in a special container, 16 ounces, not glass, bearing the insignia or the logo of the social district. We must erect signage for the boundary of the social district. And so, with that, the map that was included in tonight's packet does show the amended boundary for the social district that we had talked about the last month. So, the Commons Area, which is really where people are allowed, permitted to gather and enjoy beverages throughout the social district, includes all sidewalks, city-owned parking lots, Gateway Park, Altrusa Park, and then the rights-of-way that are within the entire social district. We did include St. Mary's Park and the City Hall Government Plaza for special event only. And so, the Health and Safety Maintenance Plan, as well as the resolutions prescribe that those two areas of the social district would be only allowed to be open and operated after a special event permit or application has been submitted to the city manager's office and approved. Typically, all those special event applications get filtered around to all the different departments and relevant departments for feedback and approval. So, other than that, I think that based on feedback from last month, we're ready to go. The process, if City Council adopts a resolution tonight, would be for that resolution to be then forwarded to the state of Michigan and the Liquor Control Commission for their approval. And then, once we receive their approval, I'll work with Communications Director Jody Egan to design the logo and then start ordering and erecting the signage around the downtown or around the social district. That would also, at that point, permit the retailers and licensed, license holders in the downtown, if they want to participate in the social district, can then begin to submit applications to the city, because ultimately, they need a permit from the Liquor Control Commission in order to receive that permit. The local unit of government must approve that as well. There is process and procedures laid out in the Health and Maintenance Plan in case any of the establishments or licensees want to use more than just their license premises, so if they want to expand on the sidewalk in front of their premises, or set up like temporary gathering spaces anywhere else within the social district and Commons Area as defined, there's a certain application process and review process that would be for those applicants. But other than that, I think we've encapsulated everything that's needed under the statute and ready for your consideration for approval.
Thank you, Mark. Just a quick item, because maybe some that are here, or maybe are listening this evening that may have not caught this discussion at the past work sessions. How do social districts get started in the state of Michigan? It's not something that Monroe is doing by itself, but it's, it's been, I'd say maybe just some information briefly, but also the successes and how it's been managed in other communities across the state and why we're here today.
Yeah, certainly. So, as a response to the COVID pandemic, when many bars and restaurants began to limit indoor seating and expand their outdoor seating, the state did. The legislature approved, and the governor signed a statute allowing for social districts that allow for more socialized gathering within the downtown to be able to move about with alcoholic beverages to attract and improve quality of life in communities. And so, these have been instituted and initiated all across the state, and so, we did follow best practices on what other communities have done across the state with guidance from the Michigan Municipal League and others, and took a look at their boundaries and other communities, the rules and regulations that they put in place, and what has worked in other communities as a part of the development of our program.
Thank you. I'll just, another comment I have, and I'll see if there's questions from the council. I appreciate the maintenance and safety plan that was in there as well, the information there about social districts and how it's going to be managed, and then, of course, that's available to the public as well for view. Any questions or comments from council, from Mr. Cochran? Councilwoman Felder.
For the benefit of the public, how would one, if the district boundaries, if a business wanted to participate but is not currently within the district boundaries, how does the boundaries of the district become amended in the future, and what's that process look like? Same process that we're going through tonight. So, City Council would adopt a resolution, expanding or amending the boundaries, that would then get forwarded to the state for their review and approval, and then we would have to move the signage accordingly. But it can be changed and amended in the future. So even subsequent applications would have to go through the, both the city and then the liquor control? Correct, yep.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Cochran.
Thank you.
So, this is an item that's under council action this evening, and is to approve the resolution or not regarding the establishment of a downtown social district. If there's no other comments, Councilwoman Stillgrave.
Your Honor, I move to approve the resolution to establish a downtown social district. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Stillgrave, supported by Councilwoman Germaine, on item 3786, a consideration of a resolution to establish a downtown social district. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Stillgrave.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Germaine.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Thank you again, Mr. Cochran. I know there's a lot of work and discussion internally, but also externally with our partners. Clerk Treasurer, next item, please.
The next item is item 3755, Approval of Demolition Contracts for 1304 East First Street.
Thank you. Mr. Pastu, any comments to start?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, this item had been presented to City Council back in September with a request to... to table it for an additional month. This is, came to you preceding hearings before the Construction Board of Appeals and an order for demolition issued by the building official. So having solicited bids, again, presented at the second meeting in September, tabled, if you recall back in October, we had a issue regarding power, so we ended up tabling that and putting it on tonight's agenda. When the agenda went to City Council on Thursday, subsequent to that, there was some legal updates that the City Attorney, Mr. Buds, will provide for council prior to consideration of this item.
So we have the item, Mr., okay, we have the item before us this evening, which is a council action, and I understand there are representatives that are here this evening. So what I'd ask is if there's comments or presentation that wish to be made this evening from those present before council discusses further, I'd be open to those conversations now. And this is, again, the approval, the item, I'm sorry.
For the public's benefit, if Mr. Buds, would you just allow him to give you a background?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I apologize.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I'll just say, by way of brief update, I agree with everything that the city manager had indicated. I did receive, I'll say, sporadic contact regarding this property in the time, around the time of that meeting, including from legal counsel that contacted me back in the middle of October, then recently contact on last Friday. I was served with a complaint that was filed against the city by other attorneys, some of whom I believe are present here today. And I would be happy to talk about that further after any presentation that the property owner would be happy to make.
Okay. Thank you. I apologize. Sir, please come up. Just, we ask anybody that speaks, we just ask that you identify yourself, and then, of course, you're represented on this item, so the clerk has it for our record. Yes, sir?
Yes, good evening, everyone. My name is Attorney Coleman Potts. I'm with Detroit Legal Group, and I am here on behalf of Pastor Freeman regarding property at 1304 East First Street. I'm not coming into this entirely blind. I understand that I'm a bit late to the party, but I'm still hoping that you all let me in and let me make some comments toward this property. Now, this property has been with Ms. Freeman since 1980. That's when she purchased it. It has been used as a church. It has been used as a place for people to live, and it has had constant use up until recently. Now, I understand that the city, back in 2021 or before that, or I'm only privy to the demolition notice that I saw from 2021, had an interest in knocking down the building. I don't know what extent the city went to to see if the building was structurally sound or was able to be saved, but I do have architectural plans that state in pertinent part that the building can be saved. These plans have been presented to Attorney Buds in the verified complaint and emergency motion that we did file with Monroe County Circuit Court on Friday. These plans state specifically, Composition Workshop is who put this plan together. He's a licensed architect. And he stated specifically, Composition Workshop has provided architectural services for the renovation and restoration of similarly distressed structures more than 25 times in the last seven years. Many of those structures were originally slated for demolition. While the building is significantly damaged, structural damage appears to be localized, and provided the building is protected from further water damage, we believe that restoration and repair is more than feasible. Again, I recognize that I'm a bit late to the party, but I think the county and/or the city has an interest in preserving this property. I reviewed the agenda in this matter, and this is the first time that it's come to my attention that the bid price to knock down this property is almost $28,000. I think it'd be more wise to let Ms. Freeman and her family, who are present here today, to put this property back together in a sound structural pace as opposed to spending $28,000 to knock it down. This, just to repeat, this property has been with her and her family for more than 40 years at this point, before I was even born. And we have a plan. I understand that there's been some discussion before, and they may not have had a sound plan, but we have a plan now. I have copies of this architectural sheet and plan for everyone to view, if you'd like, but this building can be saved, and that's why we're here today, to save this building, keep it to her family so that it can go to good use as opposed to being a vacant lot and sitting there. Now, I'm under the assumption that if this building is knocked down and you, the city does incur these costs, and these costs are going to be passed on to Pastor Freeman. And what happens if the building takes $28,000 to knock down? That cause goes to her now. What happens if she can't pay it? That means she loses her property altogether. If we have a plan to keep this building set, stable, structurally sound, and we can put it together, why not let's save the building? I know we have some other people here who like to talk, and I'll let them speak, and I'll may have some final remarks after they're done.
Thank you, Attorney Potts. Yes, sir. Name, please, and then...
Good evening, counsel. My name is Rod King, and I work on the benefit in the behest of Pastor Freeman. I initially spoke with Attorney Matthew Buds in regards to this building. We understand that this building has a long history. It's been in the family, it's been in the community, it's done a lot of service to the community for decades. We know that there have been some times when the family did not or had not had a full plan and scope of work as it relates to the building itself. Myself, I am a construction contractor, and I do construction contract management. So on initial blush, when I inspected the building, we found that the building had no worse care or situations that needed to be remedied than any other project. Quite frankly, it's in much better shape than most projects that I renovated in the city of Detroit and the surrounding areas. We feel that this building can actually be a benefit to the community, where it sits, how we are looking at putting the building back together again, whether it be for living purposes for families or be for mixed use, with even opportunity for senior care or veteran care. So we're looking at a number of different projects or possibilities for the building. We know the building has the opportunity to be put back correctly. And as Mr. Potts said, Attorney Potts said, we know we're a little late to the party, but we hope we're the advance team able to help in remedying the situation rather than having a structure that actually kind of visually from the outside, although it needs repair, it can actually be redone. We know that they have also cleared out the parking lot, the alley, they have taken down the garage structure, and would like to continue in that vein as it moves to the next generation. Thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. King.
And again, if you would like a copy of our scope of work that we had talked about, we did get a demo quote as well. It's a little bit higher. We will be seeking a second and third quote as well to demolish the building, but we look forward to working with the city of Monroe and potentially other people within the city of Monroe as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Other comments on this item? This is, obviously, new information for us here this evening, some of the information, but if there's others? Yes, please.
Good evening to the council and to everyone that's here. I'm Pastor Ann Jackson, having been a long residence here. Some of you may have remembered my husband, Bishop Milton Jackson. Him and I worked diligently to enhance this community. We had the first largest daycare center that was located right there on Second Street at 1030 East Second Street, and to my surprise, that building was tore down. But anyways, due to my circumstances, after my husband passed, I end up moving to Lexington, Kentucky. And there, since being there, I've had the responsibility of caring for my father before he passed. And then my mother, this marriage, had a stroke, and then my husband became incapacitated and down through the years. The last few years, it's been like, kind of overwhelming, you know, being a caretaker, being a mother, being a wife, and so forth. But one thing for sure, I have spent thousands of dollars to maintain the taxes and upkeep of that piece of property. Thousands of dollars that I've, you know, had to save, and, okay, well, let me go ahead. And then weekly, biweekly, I would send the money to have the grass cut. One summer, I came and cut grass and tore down weeds and things like that. I want the council to know and to understand, my heart is still in this city. My husband's name and my name is still on the building. And I've, you know, talked to Attorney Buzz, and I said, okay, I just want you guys to work with me. And that's what we're asking again, to continuously work with this. And we're striving now to do what we can do because I had to pass the responsibility on to my children that went to school here, that was birthed here in the city of Monroe. And I just know that, you know, my daughter received a word of prophecy, and her husband woke up and says, like, God says, go to Monroe or whatever. So we're here, and I'm requesting you all to just work with us. And as we did when we first came to Monroe, strive to make the city better, add to what is already being done. I was really impressed today with the children's program and things that they're doing for the children, because we have, as a whole, a tremendous responsibility to raise our children past a cell phone. And that's my desire, once again, to assist with my heart being here, my children being here, my grandson, and others will be coming to assist, to continue to build. And once again, thank you. God bless you.
Pastor Jackson. If there's other comments? Yes, sir.
Cleo James, 633 Stone Street, Monroe, Michigan. I'm not here in the capacity of second vice president of NAACP or political action person. I'm here to say that this building is here and is a staple of Monroe, and I would like to see it kept, and it would help when they bring things back to Monroe. It would help keep everything in order. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. James. Maybe I'll go to Mr. Buds. I know this is an action in force as a, regarding the demolition contract. Obviously, there's additional information that council's probably hearing some of here yet tonight, some of the engagement between not just attorneys but family and Pastor Jackson with Mr. Buds. I'll also kind of ask you what your thoughts are at this point. I know with, as you alluded to, what was already, you received here, I guess, this week.
Your Honor, because of some of the issues that are involved, and because there's now a pending court case, my recommendation would be that as we have a closed session scheduled for this evening already, that we take the opportunity to discuss some of those legal items which should be kept as attorney-client privileged during that closed session as it relates to the litigation, and then come back out and address this item after the conclusion of that closed session. So my recommendation would be to postpone this matter until after the conclusion of tonight's closed session and to allow me the opportunity to speak with you regarding those matters in the closed session. When we get to that point in the meeting, if there is an inclination to do that, I'll provide some language that I would propose for that motion to go into the closed session.
Questions from council? Councilman Vining?
I didn't have a question, but I'm glad Pastor, Pastor Jackson Freeman brought up about how much work you and Bishop Jackson did in the city over the years. Just a few of the things that I was talking to Milton the second about is about the legacy that you all left, namely, the backpack giveaway. A lot of people don't know that you founded that, and it grew to last all these years. This is the first year that it, that it didn't happen. And I know you started that well over 20 years ago. The tutoring program that still lives on at the community center, I know you had something to do with that. All the adults now who talk about how they never would have had an opportunity to go camping or fishing, the clothing closets. I've carried on personally, the beauty supply, the dreams that you all and along with Milton the second put forward to teach us in the neighborhood about entrepreneurship. So he was a little discouraged saying, you know, we put in all that work. And I was telling him, this been a few years ago, but no, you can't be discouraged because there's a lasting legacy that you've left in the city. These are programs that now involve big nonprofits like Salvation Army, Monroe Public Schools, MCOP. I mean, so there is a legacy. So where it may seem like because of life circumstances, the property got a little bit away from you and whatnot, I understand that your legacy lives on here in the city of Monroe. And even though these things that we started, you know, just giving out the free food and, like I said, the clothing closet and the food pantries, these things have grown and other agencies are carrying them on, and they might not even know that yourself and the bishop started a lot of these activities that remain today. So I'd like to get into the, the structural soundness and the things that the attorney will discuss with us in closed session, but, but it's not like in a situation where, what do we call them, an absent landlord just walks away and they have no care or no concern for this city. I just want it, wanted to be said that there are still lasting connections and things that you started, you know, just with a little bitty nothing, and they've grown and they've lasted. So I just wanted the rest of the council to be able to know that you still have a strong connection, and the family still has a strong connection to the city.
And grandchildren, too.
And grandchildren, yes. You know, here in Monroe, even though you're in Lexington. So even as far as Stephanie Kasberg was just here talking about the mural program, and your grandson, who's becoming a world-renowned artist in his own right, will probably be painting one of those murals right here in the city of Monroe next summer. So I just wanted to make that clear, that there are lasting connections that the family has, and it's not a situation of an absent landlord. I understand situations happen, and it, maybe it did go a little bit far, but I understand that if given the chance, you'd all be capable of bringing that back to life. So, thank you.
Thanks, counsel. Thank you, Councilwoman. Hold on, hold on. I always say it's always, I appreciate the passion and the want to support, but then sometimes, and if you accept the collapse, you got to accept the other side, which we don't want to hear. So I could see, I could see just by your faces the satisfaction with the comments from the councilwoman, and I think that's fine. I appreciate that.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I wanted to make you aware, I was handed a packet of information. I believe there's a copy here for each, from Mr. King, for each council person. So I did want to let you know that that is here.
Thank you.
I can pass it out, or I can hold on to it. It's up to you.
We'll make sure the council gets that. Thank you, Clerk Lavoy. So there's a lot of additional information here this evening, and I'm going to state, and I'm going to look at Mr. Buds before I go too far where I shouldn't be. But with the new information and filings, obviously, there's things that become attorney-client privileged information because we need to hear from Mr. Buds as well. So that's what, I understand, Mr. Buds, that you're looking to postpone this until after our closed session, but you're asking that to be added to there, to amend our closed session, to include this item so we can have some discussion and then come back out, correct?
That's correct, Your Honor. And I would want to be clear for those that are in the public that are here or watching that what I'm suggesting is postponing to later this evening, after we would come out of the closed session where I have the opportunity to speak with you about the recently filed litigation.
Any thoughts from council? Okay. So I guess just to clarify, there's a couple more items on the... So I guess just to clarify, there's a couple more items on the agenda. And as we get through all the comments and stuff, at the end of our meeting, which is on our agenda, is a closed session for our regular litigation updates. And then we'll wait for Mr. Buzz to say, if that's what council wishes to do, how we, I guess, do that now with as far as, we need a motion to postpone it until then. And then we'll need a motion later to amend the item in the closed session. And then when we come back out, there'll be, I guess, further conversation. So please don't leave. We won't be long, though, either. Is that correct, Mr. Buzz?
That's correct, Your Honor. I would say a motion, if you're in agreement with what I'm proposing, to postpone this item until the conclusion of the closed session. And then when we get to the item for the closed session, I'll make a recommendation on the language to use at that time.
Okay. So that's kind of the recommendation we're getting, looking for a motion. Councilwoman Vining?
I'd like to make a motion that we postpone item 3755 until the conclusion, until after the conclusion of the closed session.
Yep. There's a motion by Councilwoman Vining, supported by Councilwoman Stillgrave, that on item 3755, we postpone this item until the conclusion of the closed session, which is currently within our, on our agenda. Other comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Stillgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germani?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Next item, please.
The next item is item 3793, consideration of proposed ordinance 22-005 to dissolve Parks and Recreation Commission.
Mr. Pastu?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Your Honor. City administration's recommending a first reading and scheduling of a public hearing to dissolve the Parks and Recreation Commission during the work session tonight to, you know, witness what took place this last year with contracting with MCOOP, with the YMCA, Great Start Collaborative working there, as well as what was done with our staff for programming for recreation. We think that we've kept city council informed of these changes through the work sessions and in some ways changed some of the role of the Parks Commission, which hadn't met in a number of years. The other part of it is, with the ordinance itself, is that the Citizens Planning Commission would play a more important role regarding the development and recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Plan, which ultimately is adopted by the city council, but also be responsible for reviewing construction projects involving site plans, elevations, floor plans related to our city parks. And so while there was a role to be played with the Parks and Rec Commission, we think handling internally as well as with contracts and having the Planning Commission play a more important role, you know, addresses many of the responsibilities previously handled by Parks and Rec Commission.
Any questions from council members for Mr. Pastu? I'm just going to make a comment real quick. You know, when you, if you've not been present in at least this evening's work session or past work sessions, or the past years even, in our discussion on the Parks and Recreation and how we've really transformed how we're delivering those services, tonight's work session, if you did not catch it, please go back and watch it because it'll really show what's in place. Because when you, I guess when somebody was just to walk in and say, what do you mean you're going to dissolve Parks and Recreation? It seems like we're not having that. That's not the case at all. What it is, is we're transforming to provide the service for our youth, our community and adults as well in the activity. So as we get into the next item, it kind of ties this as well. So this has been a long discussion and it's been years that the current Parks and Recreation Commission has not met because their function has changed, how we function Parks Recreation and our partnerships. So I, so those that may not know, I ask you go see that or we're always welcome to have conversation with you. So that's just my comment because it seems like for some might be drastic. That's not it. It's what we've put in place to be able to do this at this time to better deliver service regarding to Parks Recreation, our youth, our youth activities and the nonprofit partners that we have established over the last couple of years plus. That's my comment. Any other comments? If not, there's a council action for item 3793.
More motions?
Item number 3793, proposed ordinance 22-005 to dissolve Parks and Recreation Commission. Move that proposed ordinance 22-005, an ordinance to amend Chapter 22, Boards, Commissions, Authorities, and Committees to amend Article 6, Monroe Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission of the Code of the City of Monroe, to dissolve the Monroe Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, be placed on the floor for its first reading and set the public hearing and second reading on Monday, December 5th, 2022.
Motion by Councilwoman Germani, supported by Councilwoman Stillgrave on item 3793, proposed ordinance 22-005 to dissolve Parks and Recreation Commission, but to set a public hearing and the second reading on Monday, December 5th, 2022. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Stillgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germani?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
All right, I will now conduct the first reading, ordinance 22-005, Chapter 22, Boards, Commissions, Authorities, and Committees, Article 6, Monroe Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission. An ordinance to amend Chapter 22, Boards, Commissions, Authorities, and Committees, to amend Article 6, Monroe Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission of the Code of the City of Monroe, to dissolve the Monroe Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission.
Thank you. Next item, please.
The next item is item 3797, consideration of proposed ordinance 22-006 to establish Bicycle and Pedestrian Trail Advisory Committee.
Mr. Pastu?
Thank you, Your Honor. City administration is recommending council to introduce a first reading and schedule public hearing related to an ordinance that would establish a Bicycle and Pedestrian Trail Advisory Committee. This is one of the recommendations that's come out of the Trail Advisory Committee with the report that'll be presented at the December 12th joint meeting with Citizens Planning Commission. The committee be involved with promoting bicycle and walking within the city by improving awareness and facilities and opportunities, reviewing all street and trunk line projects to ensure bicycle and pedestrian plans are coordinated. Three, to review and encourage amenities such as wayfinding maps, bike racks, benches, bicycle repair stations, and promote Monroe as a bicycle and pedestrian hub. Four, to consider recommending regulations to improve safety for bicyclists and pedestrians. And fifth, monitor implementation of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Trail Plan. With putting the ordinance together, we've recommended five members serving staggered three-year terms, of which it's written in there to have three, at a minimum, must be citizens, residents of the city of Monroe.
Thank you. Any questions from council for Mr. Pastu? Obviously, this is also setting the first reading this evening, but the, sets the public hearing and second reading on December 5th. Felder?
The ordinance specifically makes no mention of any council liaison. I'm wondering if that's unusual for this or if that's, if just the general practice is that one of the five appointed members would be that? Or how do our other committees work? Is it very much in the same manner?
Some committees, commissions have liaisons, some may not. Sometimes we kind of, a council member may attend. I'm not opposed to having an item such as this, that there's a liaison, if that's what council wishes to do. I think that as we, how about if I go through the boards and commissions and give the, kind of the review of what does and doesn't and how that might fit within this? So we still have the opportunity at the second reading to make an amendment, if I'm correct, looking at the clerk and looking at Mr. Buzz. So we'll have a little more information about our other boards and commissions that do. Obviously, you know that the Commission on Environment has a council member assigned to the board. That's a different role. You're a participant in the decision-making. We have Citizens Planning Commission, it has a council liaison. They're not there to participate in the discussion but to share information from council's position on discussion, but also bring information back. Difference between a member of a board or commission and a liaison. This being a committee, I want to look at some other committees, but I'm not saying we don't have council liaisons and it may be one that we want to because we're starting to get some motion in this action, or some movement in this item, both a study that we're having done as well as involvement of residents. So I wouldn't be opposed to having that consideration, but if I get some information and maybe at the next meeting, if it's a second reading, if there's a desire to have that amendment to the numbers, I'm open to that as well. We've kind of consolidated some of our boards and commissions. We had some that were nine people, 11, and it's really getting a challenge to find people to serve at times. So we've gone down to seven, even five. The traffic committee used to have nine, now it's down to five. So that might be an item that also gets adjusted because if we're looking to add from this committee onto the Traffic Safety Committee, maybe seven becomes appropriate again. But those are, those will be the kind of the adjustments. If we approve this, then you have to add to that. So there's some secondary items I think we have to take in consideration, too, that we can do before the next meeting, if that's acceptable.
And that's fine. And I guess either by practice or by law, it wouldn't prohibit a council liaison, a non-voting observer being president of the meetings that's just designated by the council as, hey, observe and report, sort of stuff. But I think that being part of the trails process, there was a lot of interconnectivity, not only with our own committees, the Heritage Corridor Plan, the Parks and Rec Master Plan in conjunction with the Trails Plan, but also those of other communities as well and the regional plans that are associated with them. So having some connectivity to those in some broader level communication could be useful. But the form that that takes is up for discussion.
And in the Citizens Planning Commission, as listed in the fact sheet as well, is another connectivity. So it's better when the boards and commissions have some crossover so one is not kind of isolated and making decisions that then impacts the other and then they have to readjust. It's better to do it collectively. So I'll put some information together and then I'll look at what that might be of other commissions or committees that might be impacted as well. So we have that prepared at that second reading as well. So at this time, a motion being ordered.
Your Honor?
Councilman Felder?
I move that proposed ordinance 22-006, an ordinance to amend Chapter 22, Boards, Commissions, Authorities, and Committees, to add Article 15, Bicycle and Pedestrian Trail Advisory Committee of the Code of the City of Monroe, be placed on the floor for its first reading and set the public hearing and second reading for Monday, December 5th, 2022.
Motion by Councilwoman Felder, supported by Councilwoman Germani on item 3797, proposed ordinance 22-006, to establish a Bicycle and Pedestrian Trail Advisory Committee, the first reading this evening and a public hearing, the second reading on December 5th. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Stillgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germani?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
I will now present the item for its first reading, ordinance 22-006, Chapter 22, Boards, Commissions, Authorities, and Committees, Article 15, Bicycle and Pedestrian Trail Advisory Committee. An ordinance to amend Chapter 22, Boards, Commissions, Authorities, and Committees, to add Article 15, Bicycle and Pedestrian Trail Advisory Committee of the Code of the City of Monroe.
Thank you. Next item.
I have no other items, Your Honor.
Okay, well, it's, council comments is next. It's November. Councilwoman Moore saved his for the next meeting. Councilman Felder?
Thank you, Your Honor, and I must apologize in advance. I will be verbose this evening. Relating all to the nonprofits that were here with us during our work session, I'm certainly impressed at what we all can achieve together within the community. It's not about any one of us, but about the services and the culture and the richness that we can bring to our community together. And I certainly look forward to continuing many of those partnerships and expanding upon them in the future. I know I was out at the YMCA for our Leadership Monroe. We visited the YMCA and helped them prepare a meal and we visited Salvation Army and MCOOP and had a presentation for CASA. So there's a lot of nonprofits in the city of Monroe that are doing a lot of cool things and I was riding shotgun with HOC the whole way. So we were talking about the ball program and how that was going and, you know, the cool things that we're doing in our partnership together. So I just wanted to celebrate what they're doing. I'm certainly looking forward to working with Patrick Barley and the Robert Seldon-Dunkinson Society as well. I think we have some really cool events coming up planned for the future. And then the tree lighting, of course. I was there from four to nine. That was quite a long night, quite a cold night. I certainly hope that everyone here in the committee, in the community that wanted to have an opportunity to get out there and watch the lights had that opportunity and braved the cold to do it. I know that the River Rays and Battlefield Foundation had a fundraiser and I think, Mr. Mayor, your team got third place. Is that my understanding?
That's correct.
Are you disappointed with that placing?
Good evening.
Yeah. It was a good job. It's a good job. I hear we were well represented. Also, at the battlefield this weekend, we had the Sugar Plum Tea Party where Director Egan won the 50-50 raffle. So I think it was a good, it was a good week for city employees. And of course, the Sugar Plum Tea leads into the Nutcracker Ballet at the RSCA, which is an annual event that brings a lot of people into our community and into our downtown. So if you haven't already got your tickets for that, please, you know, take the chance. It's especially great for the kids in town. So had a chance to, I know you did as well, Mr. Mayor, had a chance to go out to the Focus on the Future event out at Community College. There was a lot of community leaders there from across the county. I think that was a very good opportunity for the city to represent itself and, you know, form partnerships for the future. So a good presentation there that evening. Small Business Saturday is coming up, of course, as well as Thanksgiving. Please play patronage to your small businesses and support local businesses. On a more substantive note, we have a housing objective, under goals and objectives session that we voted on at the beginning of the year. I think we spent about two out of the six hours of our meeting on that objective alone. In my opinion, it was sort of widely accepted by the council that that was our sort of number one thing going forward that we wanted to address this year. I certainly know that we've been busy. I know that there's a lot on the administration's plate, but I'd like the opportunity to sit down as a council and discuss that sometime in the future, in a work session or otherwise. It was an important objective that was identified. I just want to make sure that it didn't slip through the cracks and I look forward to having that discussion. I think that we can accomplish a lot just by, even without a consultant, just by agreeing, you know, sitting down, talking about what the issues are and agreeing on what we would like the plan to be, what we would like the goal to be and the direction that we want to go in. Because the first thing a consultant is going to say when they come to the room is we are really looking to the council to set the policy and the direction here. So I think we can save a lot of time and money by sitting down with each other and deciding on that before we bring anyone in. So I look forward to having that discussion. And then, of course, I hope everyone has a happy Thanksgiving and is able to set some time aside to spend with each other's families. So, thank you, Your Honor. That is all I have this evening.
Thank you. Councilwoman Whitman?
Yes, I just want to complain about it was too cold and I couldn't go to the lighting. I made the comment the two weeks before that I was excited because it was warmer and I would be able to go to the tree lighting. Well, that's not how it worked out. But I also want to, you know, say how proud I am of, you know, the public safety commanders and I think about when I started on city council and how far we've come and the things that, the work that has, it sounds so simple to say, well, we did this, we did this, we did this. Well, it wasn't that easy. There's a lot of talking and planning. And we are very fortunate to have the staff that we have that do the work that they do. So I'm very proud to be on city council. And I wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy your families, your food, whatever, football if you must, you know? But I wish you well.
Thank you. Councilwoman Stillgrave?
Thank you, Your Honor. Tree lighting was amazing, absolutely amazing. I hope everybody got to go and enjoy it. I really appreciate everybody that came here tonight to speak. I really appreciate everybody that came here tonight to speak and do presentations to let us know what they're doing. And there is a lot of amazing nonprofits in Monroe County. And I'm fortunate because I get to work with a lot of them and be a part of the community in a lot of different ways. Congratulations to our commanders, J.D. Wall, Scott Smiley, and I think it's Derek Lindsay, Chad Tolstad. We have an amazing team. And our city employees, I can tell you, and I don't think they get praised enough because we have an amazing group of people in our city staff, amazing group. And happy Thanksgiving and promote small business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Vining?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm sure you were going to mention the firefighters' annual. I don't know what annual this is, but do you know, Director?
I think it's going on like 1991, I think.
Yeah, it's been a long time. And they'll be at the Oaks Village Hall, which is formerly the St. John's, I'm sorry, St. Joseph's Hall, and they'll be making their wonderful Thanksgiving dinner Wednesday, the 23rd. You got this information.
No, I don't. Keep going.
Unfortunately, I left my phone in there, but I think it starts at six. It'll be walk-up or drive-up again this year. So you can walk up, I want to say six to nine. As soon as we figure it out, we're going to come back and lay. I'm a summer baby, so I really don't do well with winter, but I did drive by the tree lighting and I was shocked how many people were out there. I mean, it was packed and it looked so beautiful.
I have it, Your Honor.
Clerk Lavoy?
It says, meal serving times are four, five, six, and seven. Drive-up, walk-up only.
Yes. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, so it looks so beautiful and congratulations to the city staff and kudos to them. It's come a long way since I got here 20 years ago. So it was absolutely beautiful. And it's been a good meeting tonight, and I always love when we have good flowing of dialogue and when the public can come and speak as well. So everybody have happy holidays. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I just have a few comments and I'll move through them because there's some of them mentioned, but I want to start with the hometown holiday lights, tree lighting. It was a great partnership for many, just as we had our work session here today and the nonprofits that were here. But I think about our administrative team and when you start naming people, you leave people out, right? But I have to at least mention Pat Weaver, Joe Egan, Michelle Lavoy, for all their hard work throughout the year, planning and of course delivering that on the day of, I know that Amy was there, Dr. Everly, everybody's out trying to do the last things. And, you know, I always say when there's always those unexpected items that come up and nobody recognizes that they even happened, then we were successful. It was a great evening. I want to thank the staff and the department, the DPS, to get everything done so quickly as they did. But we can do without our sponsors as well and the support they give to this community of supporting the ability to put out the elements and the lights that were out there. So and then Vintage Market started this year, and I think that's just a start of a long-term relationship for that. So second item, that leads into, well, just the tree lighting used to be one day and seems to be things were over. This is the start of the, I'll just say, the holiday and some will say the Christmas season, as we get through the end of the year. And it doesn't end just on last Friday, but Small Business Saturday that was mentioned, the Downtown Monroe Business Network has a whole list of activities each weekend, as does the businesses. And that's Small Business Saturdays on Saturday, November 26. Please come down and shop locally. That's what thrives, what makes Monroe thrive, is our small boutique, thriving businesses, and their willingness to put activities on that they do throughout the year, but also in return what they have for people to view and purchase or just visit. You know, the Santa and the igloo, the things that they have is fun activity for the children and activities throughout that weekend. So remember, as Councilwoman Stillgrave said, you know, buy local, buy small, and please come downtown. You know, Thanksgiving, you know, means many things for many people, and I think of, we all have things that we have as far as in our lives, but in the end, let's be thankful for where we are, what we have, what we can do for others, and how we share those, whether it be not just on Thanksgiving Day throughout the year, but this is a time for family, time to reflect and also think about others and what we might be able to do in outreach to them as well. And as we talked about tonight, many of the nonprofits, and think about how you might be able to help as we ourselves sit with our families and are thankful for what we all have. With that, though, City Hall, you know, does recognize Thanksgiving, and so we will be closed on Thursday and Friday. So please beware of that if you are looking to complete some business with the city, whether it's just an item or the clerk's office, or it may be until Thursday, or, I'm sorry, until Wednesday. Councilman Felder mentioned about the Riverraisin Center for the Arts, the Nutcracker Ballet. I hope if you've never been there, you take this opportunity to visit this year. It is one of the best ballets in southeast Michigan. It continues to receive recognitions far and wide, and the children that are in that play give everything they do into practice and prepare. But it's, I always read articles that come from the large newspapers in southeast Michigan of how impressive it is. If you've not been there, if it's not this year, please make sure you do it next year because there's, it's December 2nd, 3rd, and 4th, if I have the dates correct. There's two times per day, and it's our downtown theater, our Riverraisin Center for the Arts. Please stop in. You can do it online as well. Lastly, my final congrats to the public safety commanders, Wall, Smiley, and Lindsay. And as I said in my earlier comments, they've worked decades together and they understand each other. They know where, how we got where we are, and I think they're going to have a vision for the future. And I want to thank Director Tolstad for his leadership and as he put together this commander's team to work across our entire public safety department, both fire and police divisions, and how we continue to provide service to the community. I think I'll stop there. Clerk Treasurer Lavoy?
I'm not sure if Councilperson Germanie had an opportunity.
Oh, I guess I pass by something. You know, this is not the first time I've done this. I have to say, because I looked to the left and they start this way, and when it comes back to me, I just kind of stop. And that's not correct. My apologies, Councilwoman Germanie. I think it was, there was a different council person sitting in that seat a few years ago, and I wonder why they kept looking at me while I was talking, but now I will write a note because I will not do this again, at least this year.
Write that 100 times. I will never do this again.
Councilwoman Germanie comments this evening.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm excited about all the wonderful, exciting things that are happening in the future of Monroe, all our nonprofits that work together, kids programs, art programs, festivals, music. It's really coming together, and I'm proud of all of us up here and everyone on the staff, the commanders that we have just promoted, everything. It's finally coming to a head. I can't believe we're here. It's finally, finally here. Also, I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Please enjoy your families and eat a lot.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Councilwomen. If I took any comments that you were going to say, I apologize, and you can let me know that later, so. Okay, now I'll go. Clerk Treasurer Lavoy comments this evening.
Yes, and to ensure we're not here at Thanksgiving, I just want to say happy Thanksgiving, everyone. I'll be brief and then we'll go forward. Thank you.
Okay. So on our agenda next is city manager, comments this evening?
Your Honor, I just wanted, item that we didn't get a chance to discuss during the work session dealt with the Lake Erie Transportation Commission inter-local agreement. They've put together a resolution and the agreement has seven members, of which two are appointed by the city of Monroe, two by French Town Charter Township, those being the primary community served by Lake Erie Transit. But the bylaws also have language in there where there's three at-large positions, seats at, I'm sorry, it's three at-large seats, and that it does reference that if there's a third municipality that does provide, that services provided to a third municipality throughout their jurisdiction, that they would, could recommend a seat there. And in this case, Bedford Township is the jurisdiction in which services provided, and the recommendation would be to amend the inter-local agreement that they would recommend to the Transportation Commission that at-large seat, of which requires, I believe, ratification by both the city and township boards as well.
Any questions for Mr. Pastu on that? I know it was on our work session, so one item we did not finalize, I think as presented is exactly what the item speaks to, is Bedford has had some dial-a-rides and other services through LET. I know they're also moving forward with some additional services. So that's kind of the item, is they're looking to be included with as one of the government municipalities as a member, a seat on the board. Any questions or comments on that for, okay, if you come with those, obviously it's something that will come back to us in another meeting because we need to vote to approve that contract or agreement, correct, Mr. Pastu?
Yeah, the intent would be to have this on the December 5 agenda.
So in that timeframe, if council members have follow-up from what was in our packets or on the agreement, please contact Mr. Pastu so we can get those questions answered and be prepared for the December 5 meeting for that agreement. Okay. Other comments?
The other item, Your Honor, I have two other items. One is, as we discussed at the end of the work session, the recommendation from the administration to cancel our meeting on November 28 in light of the fact that the refuse recycling bids and reviewing the alternatives is not nearly as complicated as I thought they would be, that, and I got the sense that it was council's concurrence to allow staff to refine some of those, the proposals submitted by Stevens and talk a little bit further at a later point, of which, you know, I would recommend that it goes on the December 5 work session. We don't have anything planned at that point in time. And then the other part of it is, is that on the 28th, we're discussing the city manager's search process. I think by waiting to the December 5 work session, we're not going to lose much of time associated with it, and I think it gives Dr. Everly a little more time to finish up the conversations and organize it a little bit, given that we'd be jumping right from a short week into, because of Thanksgiving, into that discussion. So I would look for council's concurrence to, you know, cancel that meeting and move those items to the December 5 work session.
Thanks, Mr. Pastu. Of course, this was a proposed meeting, and as we talked, the work session, Clerk Lavoy mentioned that it was not posted yet, so it's not an item that's in action. I mean, it's more of a position or any thoughts that council may have. Either, I'll just say, not in agreement, but the administration is saying that we not move forward with that special meeting for the reasons stated, unless there's other thoughts, considerations. And I think Mr. Pastu said those items will be addressed at our work session on December 5, so it's not that we're not going to discuss them or have the opportunity to have that input. I don't see any objections. Comments, Mr. Pastu?
The other one is just a follow-up to Councilmember Felder's comment about the housing. We do have the housing services coordinator position out for advertisement at this point. I think they are coming in later at the end of this month, if not early December, and we can time some of that. And I think that in light of our embarrassing failure earlier this year related to an infill development proposal, it's probably timely that we have this discussion related to a housing policy, along with the director being hopefully on board here in early 2023. Thank you, Your Honor.
I'm sorry. You know, at the Michigan Municipal League at the conference, I know that it was attended, there was a presentation. I brought some information back. I think I'll get that disseminated, at least access for council members to see. It was called about pattern homes, and it was really an interesting session to attend, and it talks about, really what we had chatted about, how's infill, but also development of housing and how you can have, and every member, well, I wasn't here, but many were, about the Sears-type homes where they would have these models and they'd get built. This was along those lines, but it was also how you could take a base form and turn it into a, three different design models. You could have it as a single family, or you can make it into a duplex. And there was even a way to put a quad building for the needs that might be in that, if that's what your housing needs are. It was really an interesting presentation. I'll pass that along for council, and I think about it for a housing discussion, so it is appropriate to bring it that time, and I'll see it get sent. Mr. Buds?
Your Honor, if I may interrupt the manager's comments with one thing. I went back and looked. We actually, at a prior meeting, did have a motion to schedule that special meeting for November 28, which is a little outside our typical way that we would have done that. That was on the agenda back at a prior meeting. So I would say that it would be advisable if we had a motion to amend that now that I see that we had taken that action at a prior meeting.
So that's why we have an attorney, right? Make sure we, make sure we don't miss those items, and I don't, I did not recall that we'd made that motion.
It was on the agenda. It was a work session, though, really ultimately because we weren't going to be taking any motions. So I think this is a conversation that the attorney and I need to have at a further, at a future date, just about special meetings and work sessions. Because we may be getting, it's the clerk's opinion that we may be getting a little far afield with some of that, but I'm perfectly fine with accepting a motion if we were, if that's, that's what Mr. Buds thinks we should be doing, so.
Okay. So, so, Mr. Buds, just to make sure that we're clear on what it is we're making a motion and decision, obviously we know the context, which is not having the previous discussed special.
Right. And then I will post it as a canceled meeting?
I would, and I'll just say for purposes of the numbers, I think I have this correct, but I believe it was previous council action number 3767, which would have been at the Monday, November 7 meeting. There was, I believe, an agenda item to schedule that as a city council work session from November 28 at 6:00 PM. And so my recommendation is that we cancel that meeting, which was previously scheduled.
Okay. Any comments from council?
We have a motion to cancel the meeting.
Yep, that's what we need. If any say your motion is?
I will make a motion to cancel the November 28 work session special meeting.
Motion by Councilwoman Germanie, supported by Councilwoman Stillgrave for the action taken to cancel the meeting on November 28. Other comments? I know that Councilwoman Whitman stepped out, but we have five.
Would you like me to go forward?
We can move forward. Please call the roll.
Councilperson Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Excuse?
Stillgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germanie?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
All right.
Okay. Mr. Pastu, anything further?
Nothing else, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next is citizens' comments time, so we'll take comments from those present here this evening, and we get to the close of that. I think that there's still an item that Mr. Buds, our attorney, has that regarding our closed session, as we talked about in the discussion on item 3755. So with that, any comments from those present here this evening? If there's any comments mindful of the rules of the chamber, we ask you to identify yourself, your jurisdiction of residence, but also that the time is three minutes. Any comments from those present here this evening? Yes, sir. Please step forward, name, and then I'll wait till you start.
Good evening, everyone.
Natspur, Pine Creek Indian Reservation in Athens, Michigan. It's probably not a surprise that I'm here to address the Custer Monument or Statue again, but we have, you know, I'm in here as my, in my capacity as a vice chairman of the Inishnaab Caucus of the Michigan Democratic Party, and we have paid for that billboard on I-75, on the busiest highway stretch in the whole state of Michigan, well into the next year and possibly longer. And I'm here to address that, but the last time I was here, I talked about, to you guys, I told, I told you I would address the Yandotte of Anordon. And just last week, I was asked by Monroe Community College to do a presentation about missing and murdered indigenous women. And the underlying issue, the biggest problem with that whole, with that whole issue, is that tribal courts do not have jurisdiction over non-Indians. So the Yandotte of Anordon, you know, the reason why this came up is they have a land acknowledgement that was never approved by the college. But the reason why this came up is they forwarded me a land acknowledgement where they addressed like the Yandotte of Anordon spelled with ending in DOT. And I said, that's not a federal And I said, that's not a federally recognized tribe. The Yandotte of Oklahoma are, but it's not spelled that way. That ends in TTE. And, okay, so moving forward from that, I was not on the ballot last week, you know, November 8th. I was not on the ballot. I was not a candidate for any office, just like all of you. I've been an elected public leader myself in the past. I've never lost in an election. I was not on the ballot in 2022 or 2020, but the Anishinaabe Caucus supported several candidates who were. We supported them, endorsed them, gave them money, and 11 of our candidates were elected to public office, you know, and hold seats, you know, January 1st and moving forward. We won the House and the Senate. For the first time in over 40 years, we control both chambers of the state of Michigan. We won the governor's seat. We won the Secretary of State. We won the Attorney General's office. So what I'm telling you people is, like, this Custer statue issue, Katie Beth Davis, who, I don't care what anybody says, she's a hero to the people of this community. She brought it up a year and a half ago, that the state of Virginia, when Charlottesville happened in 2017, nobody, you know, the citizens of the state of Virginia voted to not take down those Confederate statues. And then when the state of Virginia was taken over by the House and the state and the Senate, when Democrats took control, those statues came down. So I just want to make you all aware, we're coming after you guys for this statue on the federal level and the state level.
We have three minutes. Thank you for your comments this evening.
The wish.
Other comments from those present here this evening? Other comments? Yes, sir.
Hello. My name is James Grassil. I live on La Puzan Street, the first district. I wanted to talk about the Custer statue as well. I'm not here on behalf of any organization. I'm just a single citizen in Monroe. I would like to see Monroe work towards growing our population. I've noticed that our population has plateaued for about 100 years almost now. And I think that the statue of General Custer, I don't think it is disrespectful myself, but I don't think it is apt to be the center of our city. I don't think it draws any tourism to our city in any way. I think it would be more, I think it would be more useful at our new war memorial area over our former ice rink. And I think if we had something that was an attraction to our city, like maybe a big lazy boy couch or something that someone could just go with their family and take a picture on, it would really bring, really bring our city to the forefront of people's minds in a way where we're not trying to disrespect General Custer, but we also are trying to grow the population in some way. That's all I had to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you for comments. Other comments from those present here this evening? Any final comments? Here none before we go into closed session. Mr. Buds, I know in our conversation at the previous item, you were going to make a recommendation or suggestion, I should say, that council, I guess, amend the items that are listed under the closed session.
Your Honor, my proposed motion for tonight's closed session would be to move to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation with OFTH 172 LLC regarding Oak Forest, pending litigation with Pastor Jackson Freeman, to discuss land acquisition and to review attorney-client privileged correspondence.
Any comments from council, or do we need a review of that? I know two of the items are currently listed, and so the, it's not really changing the motion on the closed sessions to go to closed session for the two items that are listed, but also to discuss litigation on the Pastor Jackson Freeman and also attorney-client privilege. Any questions? Just looking for a motion.
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Vining?
I'd like to make a motion that we go into closed session regarding litigation of, pending litigation with Oak Forest property maintenance and also the issue with Pastor Jackson Freeman at 1304 East Burke Street. Are we discussing the blight and the land acquisition? And also blight abatement and land acquisition?
And then attorney-client privileged.
And attorney-client privilege.
Okay. Correspondence there. There's a motion from Councilwoman Vining, supported by Councilwoman Steelgrave, to go into closed session for the items listed. Any comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Felder?
Yes.
Okay.
Steelgrave?
Yes.
Vining? Germaine? Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion that we go back into open session.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Felder, supported by Councilwoman Steelgrave to go back into open session. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Steelgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
I guess I'm supposed to motion that or note that through the sound, so we're back in open session. So during a closed session, there was discussion that was pertaining to the item that was earlier on our agenda that we postponed until after the closed session. That was item 3755. So coming out of that, I just have the parties that are here representative. I just had a question from an item that was discussed there before we might move forward with what we have before us. So I don't know who might want to, it may be, because there was a plan that was presented, and the plan that was presented had information, but the plan didn't have a timeline or anticipated cost to that plan. So I'm just asking those two questions if there's, if that's known or is that something that is not known at this time?
For the record again, Attorney Coleman Potts on behalf of Ms. Pastor Freeman in this matter, until we're actually able to pull permits and things of that nature, we wouldn't have like a decisive plan. I can, I mean, depending on the outcome of this, I can definitely get that information, but it's, that's not something we'll know until we actually can pull the required permits to start the work.
Okay, thank you.
And then again, for the record, Rod King for the Freemans. In best case scenario, we're looking at about six months to nine months in finalizing. It could actually be faster than that. It's also, I mean, it's truly going to be based on permit pulling and being allowed to do those things so we can get everything ready.
Okay.
Budget, we haven't come to a firm number on budget, but we're around about $200,000.
I understand what the history of this, there may be some sort of concern, but I mean, we're willing to stay in constant communication, meet certain deadlines, but we do, I mean, I think that the basis of the conversation that we're having here is, is there something that can be fixed? And I believe we provided sufficient evidence that it actually can be fixed, and since it can be fixed and we want to fix it, we can get it done within the parameters of whatever the council comes to.
Thank you.
And then the last thing I would say, they did not bring us in in order for us to sit around and wait. I don't take clients unless we're actually moving forward in projects in scope of works and getting things done. The thing that we would look at if things worked out correctly is to, first of all, get the house stabilized so that we can actually start doing stuff on the inside as well. So finalizing the roof and the entry points as well.
I think the information and what was presented is understood. Mr. Buds?
Your Honor, if it's all right if I ask a question just that came up out of that discussion. So in the documents that I've seen up until this evening, I had seen the composition workshop. I'll call it architectural review of the property, but Mr. King, I hadn't seen your description. And I guess one thing I just wanted to have sort of out there on the record that I know we talked about during a phone call was, I'll just say, concern about the zoning for this property and what is being proposed here. I know you've got a multi-unit structure that you're talking about here, and I don't know if anybody has looked at or talked about the zoning, and I'm not here to say that that's an issue as to the demolition or not, but I want to be upfront and on the record with everyone here so that they can hear it that I think there will be a secondary concern of even if all the work could be done, is it going to result in a project that will work under the zoning ordinances that apply to that, that property now?
Absolutely. I mean, we're working, what we want to be able to do is work in conjunction with the city and their ordinances and what's allowed. I mean, obviously, if there are plans to try to do something different, we'd look for a rezone, but we actually, you know, we'll be working in conjunction with the city and what their allowabilities are.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to go to the council now. I appreciate the additional comments and thoughts from the information that you've provided that we received during our closed session we did not have before, so it took some time for to kind of dialogue through that, plus the other items we had in the closed session that I'm not going to, can't discuss. So the item before the council that was postponed until after the closed session was item 3755. And what was, the item was the approve, approval of the demolition contract 1304 East Front Street. So that's what was on for, for the council before the closed session. And I'll entertain any motion or discussion the council may have. Councilman Felder?
Yes, Your Honor. Let me get my mic to there. I'd like to make a motion with regards to item 3755 to conditionally approve the demolition contract with Hoffman for the property at 1304 East First Street, subject to a court decision in the city's favor on the plaintiff's motion for preliminary injunction with the contract to be signed by the building official in consultation with the city manager and city attorney.
Support.
There's a motion by Councilman Felder, supported by Councilwoman Germaine regarding item 3755. And the motion of, as stated, clerk, do you need any additional information?
I think I'm going to need it in writing to make sure that I have it right for the minutes. I understand what's being said, but I do need it in writing.
Is there any question from the council about the motion? There's a motion in a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Steelgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germaine?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
I guess I'm supposed to motion that or note that through the sound, so we're back in open session. So during a closed session, there was discussion that was pertaining to the item that was earlier on our agenda that we postponed until after the closed session. That was item 3755. So coming out of that, I just have the parties that are here representative. I just had a question from an item that was discussed there before we might move forward with what we have before us. So I don't know who might want to, it may be, because there was a plan that was presented, and the plan that was presented had information, but the plan didn't, didn't have a timeline or anticipated cost to that plan. So I'm just asking those two questions if there's, if that's known or is that something that is not known at this time?
For the record again, Attorney Coleman Potts on behalf of Ms. Pastor Freeman in this matter, until we're actually able to pull permits and things of that nature, we wouldn't have like a decisive plan. I can, I mean, depending on the outcome of this, I can definitely get that information, but it's, that's not something we'll know until we actually can pull the required permits to start the work.
Okay, thank you.
And then again, for the record, Rod King for the Freemans. In best case scenario, we're looking at about six months to nine months in finalizing. It could actually be faster than that. It's also, I mean, it's truly going to be based on permit pulling and being allowed to do those things so we can get everything ready.
Okay.
Budget, we haven't come to a firm number on budget, but we're around about $200,000.
I understand what the history of this. There may be some sort of concern, but I mean, we're willing to stay in constant communication, meet certain deadlines, but we, we do, I mean, I think that the basis of the conversation that we're having here is, is there something that can be fixed? And I believe we provided sufficient evidence that it actually can be fixed, and since it can be fixed and we want to fix it, we can get it done within the parameters of whatever the council comes to.
Thank you.
And then the last thing I would say, they did not bring us in in order for us to sit around and wait. I don't take clients unless we're actually moving forward in projects in scope of works and getting things done. The thing that we would look at if things worked out correctly is to, first of all, get the house stabilized so that we can actually start doing stuff on the inside as well. So finalizing the roof and the entry points as well.
Yep, I think the information and what was presented is understood. Mr. Buds?
Your Honor, if it's all right if I ask a question just that came up out of that discussion. So in the documents that I've seen up until this evening, I had seen the composition workshop. I'll call it architectural review of the property, but Mr. King, I hadn't seen your description. And I guess one thing I just wanted to have sort of out there on the record that I know we talked about during a phone call was, I'll just say, concern about the zoning for this property and what is being proposed here. I know you've got a multi-unit structure that you're talking about here, and I don't know if anybody has looked at or talked about the zoning, and I'm not here to say that that's an issue as to the demolition or not, but I want to be upfront and on the record with everyone here so that they can hear it that I think there will be a secondary concern of even if all the work could be done, is it going to result in a project that will work under the zoning ordinances that apply to that, that property now?
Absolutely. I mean, we're working, what we want to be able to do is work in conjunction with the city and their ordinances and what's allowed. I mean, obviously, if there are plans to try to do something different, we'd look for a rezone, but we actually, you know, we'll be working in conjunction with the city and what their allowabilities are.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to go to the council now. I appreciate the additional comments and thoughts from the information that you've provided that we received during our closed session we did not have before, so it took some time for to kind of dialogue through that, plus the other items we had in the closed session that I'm not going to, can't discuss. So the item before the council that was postponed until after the closed session was item 3755. And what was, the item was the approve, approval of the demolition contract 1304 East Front Street. So that's what was on for, for the council before the closed session. And I'll entertain any motion or discussion the council may have.
Councilman Felder? Yes, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion with regards to item 3755 to conditionally approve the demolition contract with Hoffman for the property at 1304 East First Street, subject to a court decision in the city's favor on the plaintiff's motion for preliminary injunction with the contract to be signed by the building official in consultation with the city manager and city attorney.
Support.
There's a motion by Councilman Felder, supported by Councilwoman Germaine regarding item 3755. And the motion of, as stated, clerk, do you need any additional information?
I think I'm going to need it in writing to make sure that I have it right for the minutes. I understand what's being said, but I do need it in writing.
Is there any question from the council about the motion? There's a motion in a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Steelgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
No.
Germaine?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes. Is there a question regarding the motion? If there is a conversation afterwards, please see Mr. Buds or if you need a copy of the motion as well, we'll make sure that...
Any final comments from the council? We had our council comments set. There's nothing left on the agenda for this evening.
Yes, Your Honor.
I had a question. The packet that composite workshop presented and the information from Ms. Attorney Potts, could we get a copy of that, please?
I believe copies were provided.
For all of council?
We'll make sure that we get them.
But so I was going to turn it into Pat Weaver, as I usually do in the morning.
Okay.
But you're welcome to.
I'd love to have a copy, please.
I don't have enough copies.
All right. We'll see. We'll have, make sure council gets copies of the few copies that we do have. We have more than one, I take it, correct?
Yes.
So we'll, if there's somebody that needs that here this evening, we'll make sure you take it. And then I'll see that copies are made in the morning through the administration office. There's three, so.
You have more?
Thank you. Thank you. One more. So we'll make sure those get disseminated for the ones we have. I'll keep one to make sure the remaining copies get placed in the mail drawers for the council members. It'll be done first thing tomorrow.
Or they can take them tonight. I mean, that's.
Yeah. The ones that are there, the ones that don't have them, so.
Right. And I took the clerk's copy already. I think there may be enough now.
Okay. Very. That's great. There's no other action? Councilwoman Vining, is there something further?
No, I just wanted to be able to read those over.
Absolutely. There's no further? There's the most?
If I can make a brief comment regarding the item?
Sure. Before we adjourn, I think the comment was made about the city's intention or desire to tear down this building. I don't think that the city has an intention or a desire. We don't have it out for this building. But I think we do have a responsibility to the residents to maintain a certain level of condition and expectation of the condition that we find our city in. And I think we're happy to work with anyone on the process that has been laid out and the rules that are there for everyone to follow. And I think that that process was exhausted. If there was going to be coordination to happen, I think it needed to happen well before now. I'm happy to see everyone here. Unfortunately, I just, I don't think that it was the right stage in the process by which to engage. Unfortunately, this is the position that we're in now. But it's not like the city has it out to go knock down all these buildings. But we need to make sure that our community is a nice place for people to live in. Thank you, Your Honor.
With that, there's no final comments. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
There was another comment. Did you ask for comments? It must have been you.
No, it was, is to the council for actions, is what I was asking. Yep.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Councilwoman Stillgrave, supported by Councilwoman Germani to adjourn. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Stillgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
No.
Germani?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Is there a question regarding the motion? If there is a conversation afterwards, please see Mr. Buds, or if you need a copy of the motion as well, we'll make sure that's available for representatives that are here. Any final comments from the council? We had our council comments set. There's nothing left on the agenda for this evening.
Yes, Your Honor. I had a question. The packet that composite workshop presented and the information from Ms. Attorney Potts, could we get a copy of that, please?
I believe copies were provided.
Enough for all of council.
We'll make sure that we get them.
But so I was going to turn it into Pat Weaver, as I usually do in the morning.
Okay.
But you're welcome to.
I'd love to have a copy, please.
I don't have enough copies.
All right. We'll see. We'll have, make sure council gets copies of the few copies that we do have. We have more than one, I take it, correct?
Yes.
So we'll, if there's somebody that needs that here this evening, we'll make sure you take it. And then I'll see that copies are made in the morning through the administration office. There's three, so.
You have more?
Thank you. Thank you. One more. So we'll make sure those get disseminated for the ones we have. I'll keep one to make sure the remaining copies get placed in the mail drawers for the council members. It'll be done first thing tomorrow.
Or they can take them tonight. I mean, that's.
Yeah. The ones that are there, the ones that don't have them, so.
Right. And I took the clerk's copy already. I think there may be enough now.
Okay. Very. That's great. There's no other action? Councilwoman Vining, is there something further?
No, I just wanted to be able to read those over.
Absolutely. There's no further? There's the most?
If I can make a brief comment regarding the item?
Sure. Before we adjourn, I think the comment was made about the city's intention or desire to tear down this building. I don't think that the city has an intention or a desire. We don't have it out for this building. But I think we do have a responsibility to the residents to maintain a certain level of condition and expectation of the condition that we find our city in. And I think we're happy to work with anyone on the process that has been laid out and the rules that are there for everyone to follow. And I think that that process was exhausted. If there was going to be coordination to happen, I think it needed to happen well before now. I'm happy to see everyone here. Unfortunately, I just, I don't think that it was the right stage in the process by which to engage. Unfortunately, this is the position that we're in now. But it's not like the city has it out to go knock down all these buildings. But we need to make sure that our community is a nice place for people to live in. Thank you, Your Honor.
With that, there's no final comments. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
There was another comment. Did you ask for comments? It must have been you.
No, it was, is to the council for actions, is what I was asking. Yep.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Councilwoman Stillgrave, supported by Councilwoman Germani to adjourn. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Stillgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germani?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.